of the houses and so forth. There's that house behind, um, what's that drugstore on the corner? CVS? Is that the one by? No.
Walgreens.
You know, there was that house behind her that was in such sad disrepair. I think didn't one time, Ms. Mills, you see somebody crawling out of the basement of that house over there?
Oh, yeah.
Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a.
And now it's for sale for like two hundred thousand dollars. They put some.
It's changed.
Yeah, they.
They've done an amazing job in there. Actually, we used to refer to it as the Snake House.
Oh, yeah.
When we did a code enforcement there one time. Um, I can't tell you the amount of snakes dead and alive we found in cages.
Oh, gross. Uh, yeah. And then somebody bought it, fixed it up, and now it's for sale for like two hundred thousand.
It was one ninety-nine the last time we looked.
Yeah.
Funny.
Yeah, isn't that crazy?
Six bedrooms, I think.
Is it really?
It's a big house.
Oh, huh. Just interesting.
Mr. President, so, um, I just noticed that you still have Chair Haynes down for Mike.
None of these are. We haven't changed anything because we don't have the final.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And the two, uh, what are, uh, two things. Um, see, don't get old. Um, oh, I know one thing I wanted everybody to think about. Mr. Tim and I, uh, Tim Monier and I were talking informally last week about, um, and I thought this was like a state of the city address. I always thought that was an interesting uh, thing. You know, if we had like just a, um, something at Kent or something in our new building or something where there's like a state of the city address. I know they do that like in, like the Mayor Bibb does it and some other places. And we thought it might be an interesting thing to update. Uh, people might want to come and listen and, and have some thoughts or so forth. It might be something different. Somebody may not want to go to a council meeting because they say that those, you know, that guy talks too much, or I don't want to hear his old stories, whatever the case. But they may want to come to a state of the city address. I think it might be. So think some thoughts about that and share with Jim or Mr. Timmonier and I and see what you think about it. I, I think it'd be something interesting, you know?
Maybe start the fireside chats again.
Yeah, there we go.
We actually did try that. Um, we were trying to do a meeting in each ward and, um,
Yeah, we did that.
the first two or three, it was very, very poorly attended. Um, I actually rented, I think, Kent the one time, and I think six people showed up, two of which were my parents and, um, I think your mom was there. Yes, yes, yeah. So that was three of the six, so.
Well, how was it marketed or advertised?
Uh, we had a, every time we came to council, we advertised it. We, um, uh, we didn't have Facebook back then, but, um, it was in the paper. The Shelley Terry used to do stories on it. Yeah, so it was, it was out there.
Yeah, get involved. Okay. Well, it's just something to think about, so we'll go from there, okay? All right. I'm gonna call the regular city council meeting for Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three to order. Uh, at this time, if you would stand for prayer and a pledge.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today, and your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so be gun, may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, Mrs. Bergen, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Holman?
Present.
Mrs. Mills?
Here.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mr. Guerrero?
Here.
Mr. Simeone?
Here.
Mr. Rosskovic?
Here.
Mr. Timmonier?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Augustine?
All right, we have no absences this evening, and we are meeting the requirements of the sunshine law. At this time, um, uh, we will have a request for an executive session or not?
I think we need an executive session for personnel and employment.
Okay.
Second, correct?
Motion by Mrs. Mills and a second by Mrs. Foglio, Mrs. Foglio, to convene an executive session, uh, to discuss personnel employment. That'll, uh, happen at the end of our regular business meeting. At what time, after which time, we will adjur- uh, come out to just adjourn. No further business will be conducted. Will you please call the roll on that?
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Rosskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Okay, so at the conclusion of our regular business meeting, we will have a brief executive session by a seven to zero vote. At this time, we will approve our minutes from our public hearing in our regular council meeting.
Who do you want to attend the executive session?
Oh, the executive session will be, uh, council and I believe, uh, Mr. Timmonier and Ms. Cooper, if you're available to join us. Thank you. Thank you. We have now the approval of minutes.
November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, public hearing meeting was called to order at six P M. by Council President Rosskovic's. Members present were Mr. Rosskovic's, Mr. Spielman, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Holman, Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. De Giacomo. Officers present were City Manager Timmonier, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Augustine, and Temporary Clerk of Council Dunlap. And then we have the, um, regular meeting. November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting was called to order at seven P M. by Council President Rosskovic's. Mrs. Foglio offered the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present were Mr. Rosskovic's, Mr. Spielman, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Holman, Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. De Giacomo. Officers present were City Manager Timmonier, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Augustine, and Temporary Clerk of Council Dunlap.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes in their entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Miss, Ms. Holman, second by Mrs. Foglio. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the minutes by a seven to zero vote. We will now go on with our administrative team reports. Uh, city council has, uh, nothing this evening other than we will be sending a letter to Congressman Joyce, Congressperson Joyce, um, and Senators, uh, Sherrod Brown and J D Vance, uh, expressing our concerns with the closure of the, um, Coast Guard Station down the harbor. And so we will do that. Uh, I believe that letter will be sent to Mr. Timmonier, and he will send it on for us, and then he will also include it, uh, when he goes and has the in-person meetings with our representatives. Also, if anyone would like to contact those, uh, representatives individually, that, you know, that never hurts either. You can, you know, call, um, and, uh, most of them have staff that will take messages and so forth. So that would be a good thing because we really want to try to save those, uh, save the Coast Guard Station. All right, that's all I have. Um, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, several ordinances to request tonight. First, I'd like an ordinance to execute change order number two with Carvo Companies, uh, of Stowe, Ohio, for the purpose of reducing the contract price by a hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and four cents for the twenty twenty-three paving project.
Mr. President, excuse me, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Mills. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like a resolution to authorize the demolition of blighted and hazardous structures located within the city of Ashtrabula.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foglio, second by Mr. Simeone. Uh, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Um, and just for everyone's information, this has to do with the, uh, Ashtrabula County Land Reutilization Corporation, better known as the Land Bank. Uh, we are going after our next round of funding coming out from the state. Um, I say we because, uh, as you know, I do serve on the Land Bank Board. Um, and, uh, that money will be distributed all through Ashtrabula County. Uh, however, we traditionally have received the bulk of those funds. Uh, we've put together a good list, uh, that includes the houses that are on this list plus a few more. Um, so we're looking forward to those demos coming up in twenty twenty-four.
Why, uh, why the subject of the Land Bank is that? How are we coming along with our harbor high, uh, football property?
Um, so we're still in discussions with the developer, um, of what we have to decide is going to be how we're gonna add a extension to Pennsylvania Avenue. Um, the costs associated with that and also running sewers and storm drains down there, um, and how we're going to pay for that going forward. So we're, we're having some of those discussions now.
But like, like a, um, us and him together paying for it or us paying for it and?
Those are all on the table.
Oh, that's what you're discussing. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. The next two are resolutions to proceed for both our police levy and our paving levy. So first, I would like a resolution to proceed with the, uh, submission to the electors of the city of Ashtrabula at the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four election for the renewal of the existing tax levy at the rate of two and one-half mils per year for a period of five years to provide and maintain personnel, equipment, uh, personnel and equipment for the Ashtrabula Police Department.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Miss, Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We will add that to our agenda by a seven to, oh, anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote. Sorry.
Next, I would like a le- resolution to proceed with the submission to the electors of the city of Ashtrabula at the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four election for the renewal of the existing tax levy at the rate of four mils ta- per tax year for a period of five years for the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges in the city of Ashtrabula.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mr. Simeone. Any discussion? And last, last year, we passed the parks levy, right? Was it last, two years ago? It comes up next year, so it must have been three or four. Okay. I think the secret is having all the levies with Ps, parks, paving, you know, and so the people just say, oh, I don't know.
Mr. President, just one thing to note on these two levies as well. Um, many of you have seen all the information that's been going about, about reevaluation of property, um, values, um, which everybody is worried that that's gonna affect our taxes. With these as renewals, the amount of money that the city is going to receive will not change. So we receive approximately eight hundred, uh, I want to say it's like eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, for the paving levy. We will not get any more money than that unless there is new construction that comes along or additions and things like that to houses where that, that value goes up a bit. Um, but even though the property values have changed, it's just gonna be that eight hundred and twenty-two thousand will be redistributed, um, throughout the community, um, for those property, for the new property values. But, you know, because I think it was reported almost thirty-two percent, um, property values in Ashtrabula County went up, um, it doesn't mean we're getting thirty-two percent more money. Um, because these are renewals, the amount of money we're receiving is gonna be the same, so it's just distributed differently throughout the community. So if somebody says, my property value just went up to this, I'm not revoting on that tax, this should not affect their taxes in that way. Now, anything new, um, will have that effect on their taxes.
Any other questions or comments? The, the voters have been very generous about approving these and, and enthusiastically, so we hope they continue to do so. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add this to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Uh, next, I would like to repeal ordinance. It actually should be, I believe, one fifty-two, uh, in its entirety for the purpose of replacement legislation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Mr. President, just a correction. It's actually one fifty-six, not one fifty-two. But we found clerical errors and that's an appropriation ordinance, so, uh, repealing one fifty-six and replacing it, uh, with, um, I would like an ordinance to make supplemental increases and decreases to appropriations for various funds as indicated for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Ashtrabula.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
So, motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Ms. Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Uh, next, I would like an ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the purpose of vacating a portion of West Twenty-Sixth Street.
Mr. President, go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I was just gonna move on the manager's recommendation.
Motion by Ms. De Giacomo, Mrs. De Giacomo?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Foglio. Any discussion?
I, what, what street did you say? West Twenty-Sixth Street, so it's right across from the hospital on the. That's the one we just talked about? Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm. And it would be from Lake Avenue to Carso.
I think the clinic used to be on that street, the whole, the little clinic building, you know, that one. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Uh, next, I would like an ordinance to make changes to the HSA plan of the city's health insurance in accordance with the most recent changes from the IRS.
Move on the manager's recommendation.
Ms. Holman moves?
I'll second.
Mr. Guerrero second. Okay. Uh, any discussion?
I do have a question. So with the HSA, that's not something if you're not presently in that you can, that you can become a, a part of?
Uh, only during open enrollment. So, and we are doing away with the HSA account, so no new employees, nobody can get, only existing people that are on the HSA can remain on the HSA.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes. So new employees coming in go into our P P O plan.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to the agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Um, lastly, I would like an ordinance to deem the following equipment obsolete from the Public Works Department. It's one two thousand and four Mack truck and one nineteen eighty-eight Mack truck.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mr. Simeone. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Manager, I always wonder, are there any, um, parts that can be salvaged or anything more done with it after they have been deemed obsolete?
Um, we tried to do that prior to deming them obsolete, so, um, the, I believe it's the nineteen, I think it's the nineteen eighty-eight truck. We have a, what we call a sister to it, so they're the same kind of model. Um, so we've tried to scavenger parts off that that we've needed for the other trucks. Um, but at this point, they're, they're beyond what we would spend to repair them and get them back into shape. Most people will purchase these and then take the engine out and use the engine for something different or different parts of it, but usually the vehicle doesn't remain intact once it leaves us.
It nineteen, that's thirty-five years old.
Yes.
You could bring that down Lakeshore Park on Sunday afternoon and put, put it with little storage plate on it.
Yeah.
Some hydraulics.
Yeah.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Um, next, I would like to request a voice vote. We have an economic development transfer form, uh, that's included in your packet. Um, this is, uh, from a CBS store to a, um, the Burrito Loco store that's on Lake Avenue. Um, as many of you know, they are, um, they've sold the building or in the process of selling the building, uh, and closing up shop there. It will become some type of convenience store on that corner. Um, and they are transferring liquor licenses from a CBS store, I believe it's in Cleveland Heights, um, to this location. Um, this location is in, uh, Ward Three. Um, and the reason that I, that we have to do this economic development transfer form, uh, is because there are no, uh, all of the liquor licenses are accounted for within the city for, per our quota. So anytime a, um, new store opens up or somebody looking for a new liquor license, uh, they typically have to purchase it from another area and bring it in, and that requires, uh, the division of, um, liquor control requires that the municipality or government agency, uh, sign off on that transfer coming into the location. Um, so that's what this is. We've done this before, uh, we're, most recently for the hotel.
So we don't know what's going in there, just some type of?
It's some type of convenience store. Yes, yes.
In Burrito Loco?
In Burrito Loco, yes.
In Burrito Loco.
I think this is their actual last week of operation.
Yeah, and then the convenience.
So that was a dairy mart before, right?
Yeah, yeah.
When I was a kid, right?
Yep.
That's what we're talking about.
So something similar to that, like an old Lawson's.
That was Cook Drugs. That, that was, that was Lawson's.
It was Lawson's.
Lawson's.
So it's that building?
Yes.
So what are they gonna, we're talking what, beer and wine?
Um.
Carryout, right? I mean, they're not gonna be.
Yes, it's, it's not gonna be on site. It's, um, I want to say a C.
Yeah, there was some.
C one and a C two permit. Yeah.
Yeah, that was Lawson's years ago. I worked there. I cut my finger one time. I had to walk across the street to the emergency. It's a story. See, don't tell us.
As long as you got chipped dip when you were done.
I'll stop. Okay. So we just need a voice vote on that?
Voice vote, uh, to allow me to sign that form.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That has been approved by a seven to zero vote.
Um, and then just lastly, we, um, leaf, curbside leafbag pickup has, uh, ended, uh, as of last week. Uh, guys have been doing a last sweep, so if you get calls, they didn't pick up my leafbags. We have already been through areas. We're still going through areas. Um, but, um, if they're not out by now, um, they're probably not gonna get picked up, so please don't put them out or just bring them down to, uh, the Public Works Department, but we're just doing a last sweep and then we're calling it a day for that, so.
So, Mr. President, where, where do those leaves end up?
We have a contract with Brobst out on New, is that New London Road? North Bend Road?
North Bend.
North Bend Road. So our guys load them into trucks and bring them out there.
So if I, if I didn't get the leafbags out, what address would I be taking them to?
Uh, five oh one West Twenty-Fourth Street? I believe it's five oh one. Uh, so near the hospital, behind Hoffman's.
And, and what hours can I go there?
You can drop those off at any time. Um, we will, at some point here in December, say no more. Even dropping those off out front, it's, it is a extremely large hassle to deal with those, uh, as I've reported. Um, we're finding a lot of township, uh, people enjoy our service and bring their leafbags from the townships to us, so we need to come up with a better way of doing that. I would love to go back to curbside all the time, but it does require the staffing and the equipment to do it. Um, but we might have to go that route soon.
Are there any other questions or comments for the manager? Uh, Ms., Ms., uh, Ms. Cooper?
I have no report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Uh, Mr. Timmonier had two ordinances for, or Miss Ag- Mrs. Augustine, so we're covered there. And Clerk of Council, uh, Mrs. Bergen?
Yes, I would like to request ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-five. It's an ordinance to approve cor- current replacement pages to the Ashtrabula codified ordinances.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the Clerk of Council's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Ms. Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote. Okay. Those are all our city officials. Um, uh, city council reports, economic development, community development. Is there a report?
There isn't. Our next meeting is gonna be the second Tuesday in January. We do have guests.
Okay. Uh, finance and personnel?
Our next meeting is scheduled for December fifteenth at eight thirty, and we're just, we're gonna see how the budget goes, and if we need the meeting, we may, we may have it, we may not.
Okay, December fifteenth.
Little early Christmas present.
Okay. Public Works Utilities and Schools?
For now, we have it for Tuesday, January ninth at eight thirty A M.
Okay, and that's what, subject to, okay. And Safety Forces is, um, scheduled for the end of January. It's the fourth, I think, the fourth Monday of January. Sorry, I don't have that right in front of me. I forgot I was doing. Um, but the fourth Monday of January, we will have Safety Forces Committee on Monday morning at eight thirty.
Twenty-six, twenty-nine.
Twenty-ninth?
Two, three, four, twenty-second.
January twenty-second at eight thirty in the morning.
Is it eight thirty or eight forty-five?
Eight forty-five? Okay. Eight forty-five. All right. Thank you. In Planning Commission and Historic, uh, Architecture, uh, His- uh, Ashtrabula Historic Committee, um, Planning Commission is meeting this Thursday. They have two topics on the agenda. One is the car lot on Main Avenue, which has been an ongoing kind of thing. Uh, some, uh, gentleman trying to, uh, put a used car lot there across from, um, near, uh, near South Park. There's been some holdup on some, uh, regulations, so he's coming back again. And then the, uh, new drive-through window at Arby's. Uh, what Arby's, uh, intention is to demolish Arby's and then to build a new Arby's, and they want to have their drive-through, I think, off Route Twenty, on and off Route Twenty, which will be a nice addition, I think, to Route Twenty, the new, the new Arby's, so.
Mr. President, I might add that the, uh, gas station has looked like it's gonna be opening pretty soon.
Really? Yeah. Yeah, it looks like they're putting stuff in it, yeah. It's gonna make that little section of street nice, you know? So that, that Planning Commission is Thursday afternoon, so we'll report on that. Anything else?
You know, I should mention that, um, the Parks Board meeting for tomorrow has been canceled.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will have our legislation part of our meeting. We have several ordinances. If anyone in the audience would like to dis- uh, comment on any of these ordinances, now would be the time to do so. An ordinance, uh, reducing the amount of money we spent on paving, an ordinance removing, uh, blighted and hazardous structure, an ordinance to submit the police levy, an ordinance to submit the paving levy, replacing codified ordinance pages in our books, uh, ordinance to correct errors on an ordinance, and then to correct that, uh, supplemental appropriation ordinance that we will be correcting, and then amending the traffic control map to abandon West Twenty, parts of West Twenty-Sixth Street. Would anybody like to comment on any of those ordinances? Thank you. All right. With that in mind, we will go on to our legislative, uh, readings.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into change order number two with Carvo Companies, Inc., reducing the contract price by one hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and four cents for the twenty twenty-three city paving program. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-two, a resolution authorizing the demolition of blighted and hazardous structures within the city of Ashtrabula. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-three, a resolution to proceed with the submission to the electors of the city of Ashtrabula at an election to be held on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the question of the renewal of an existing tax levy at the rate of two and one-half mils per year for a period of five years to provide for, for and maintain personnel and equipment for the Ashtrabula Police Department. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-four, a resolution to proceed with the submission to the electors of the city of Ashtrabula at an election to be held on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, the question of the renewal of an existing tax levy at the rate of four mils tax for a period of five years for the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges in the city of Ashtrabula. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-five, an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Ashtrabula codified ordinances. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-six, an ordinance repealing in its. An ordinance repealing in its entirety ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one fifty-six for the purpose of replacement legislation cor- to correct errors. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-seven. An ordinance to make supplemental increases and or decreases to appropriations in the General Fund, Public Works Fund, Municipal Court Special Projects Fund, Sanitation Fund, Police Pension Fund, Permanent Improvement Fund and Water Pollution Fund for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Ashtrubula, state of Ohio for the period January one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one sixty-eight. An ordinance amending the traffic control map and file for the purpose of vacating a portion of West Twenty Sixth Street.
Thank you, Mrs. Bergen. And I, I, I didn't cover this for our new members though, but what we will do is, if you look at your agenda, we have a request for consent agenda format, which means we would vote on all these items at one time. Uh, we will wa- vote to waive the reading, uh, vote to waive two readings and vote to adopt the legislation, all seven, eight items at one time. Uh, that's what consent agenda format entails. If you do not wanna vote on all those items at the same time, you may ask that one or two be taken out. Or you may ask that they all be done individually if you, you know, depending on what your, uh, situation or what you feel about the ordinances are. If there's a, say some night there's an ordinance you don't wanna vote on, consent agenda, you just have it taken out of the ordinance. But at this time, I will entertain a motion to handle these items in consent agenda format.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Mrs. Foglio and a second by Mrs. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will handle these items in consent agenda format by a seven to zero vote. I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of these entirety, uh, in entirety of all this legislation.
I'll move on that.
Mr. Grario moves.
Second.
Mr. Simeone seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the entire reading by a seven to zero vote. We will now entertain a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings of all this legislation.
So moved. Second?
Mrs. Foglio moves and Mrs. Mills seconds. Any discussion? Would you please call the roll on this?
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Grario?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
We will waive the reading, the two readings by a seven to zero vote. Will you now, uh, call the roll on the adoption of all this legislation?
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Grario?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Yes.
All tonight's legis- all of tonight's legislation has been approved by a seven to zero vote. Is there anything else?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Timmonier, will you, um, take these levies down and file them yourself? Okay. And there's a date that we have to do that by? I, I mean, you don't have to give me the date. I just, I, since I'm the dinosaur here, I remember one time we had a, a levy, oh, you do, you. I didn't think that was on your watch, but it didn't get filed in time and, uh, we lost that levy.
December twentieth. I think everything has to be filed by December twentieth, yeah.
That's why I say to make sure it's-
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we have time, so we're gonna check. Okay. Anything else? No legislation, okay. Is there any unfinished business before council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I was gonna ask, um, Ms. Cooper, if we have any updates to the marijuana legislation for Thursday or, um, cause I know there's been a lot of controversy and things happening, so like, so I, I think there's people wondering out there on Thursday, does like a light switch, does something happen or, you know, where are we as council in on what changes, so?
So, the marijuana law, adults will be allowed to purchase marijuana, but only from certain distributors. And the state is setting up a whole department to decide where those distributors are gonna be located, much like the medical marijuana. Um, there are certain dispensaries, there're gonna be certain distributors for this. There's gonna be a licensing process, and none of that is, is set up yet. Uh, in looking at discussions with other attorneys from other municipalities, the best we can guess is, guestimate is marijuana is not gonna be available for purchase legally until the end of December of next year, by the time the state gets everything set up. There's also already draft legislation to change parts of what was passed by the people because it's not a constitutional amendment, it's actually an or- it's actually a statute. The legislature can change it as they see fit, so there's already legislation trying to change parts of it. So, most municipalities are waiting to see what's gonna happen with that legislation before they do anything in terms of allowing it, not allowing it, regulating it, moratoriums, anything like that. Um, the best advice I'm seeing from other lawyers and other municipal attorneys is kind of a wait and see approach.
So, Mrs. Cooper, if I wanna grow my own, though, how does that?
If you can grow your own, you can grow up to twelve plants. Yeah. You just can't sell it to anybody else.
Ms. Cooper, is there, or have you heard municipalities that are making legislation that, um, you would not be able to grow that in your home? I mean, as, as a city, is, is that something that's possible as well?
Some municipalities are looking at that. Some have passed laws, local laws, that just prohibit it altogether, um, for a period of time, kind of local moratoriums. Municipal attorneys have kind of been sharing examples of that throughout the state over the past week or so. If that's something council is interested in, I can look into it more and start drafting some things. I just don't think, and, and most of the people who have looked at this across the state don't think it's the emergency that it has to be done by the seventh because the legislation just isn't in a position where people are gonna be able to buy it or sell it by December seventh.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if there was anything, if we decided as council that had to be done before the seventh, so that-
You certainly can, and we can certainly have something ready for the next meeting, um, if you just give me some guidance on what you wanna do, but.
I also think if, in, you know, for the Safety Forces Committee, the thoughts of our, you know, legally, you know, what they have talked about, you know, you know, their thoughts on s- safety in regards to that might play a big role in some decision-making. I mean, and this is gonna, this is gonna be a big change, so, um, thank you for that information though. I know there's a lot, you'll hear stuff on the news and, you sent us some stuff today, so thank you.
Uh, Ms. Cooper, um, along that, those lines, workplaces are still able to kind of set their own?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, for instance, the city of Ashtrubula is still a drug-free workplace. You can still, if, depending on your job, be drug-tested. You can't just randomly drug-test everybody. But if they're in a sensitive position, have a CDL, they can still be drug-tested. Yes, absolutely.
Do we do that?
Yes. Regularly.
So then would that have to, with the new law on December seventh, then would, would their contracts, do, do those things need to be amended or no? We're just, uh?
We will, we will remain a drug-free workplace.
Okay. That includes us, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, there was a big article about this in the paper today, and that's the, the problem. They even said in the summer, none of this will even be getting, uh, uh, corrected until the summertime. The, the problem is almost sixty percent of the people in Ohio voted for this, fif- oh, fifty-seven percent plus, you know? And so for, uh, a legislative body to undo that, sort of a tricky kinda thing, so, I, I think we just need to, uh, wait and see what happens and proceed with caution and, um, you know, keep all of this, uh, in mind. Did you wanna add something, Ms. Cooper?
I was just gonna remind everybody that marijuana is still a controlled substance under federal law and it's still a federal crime to possess it, although they don't prosecute it until you get to big, huge amounts.
I think it's just a confusing time, cause like Terry said, somebody could have plants, somebody, somebody could say, hey, you know, next week somebody can have two and a half grams, which we don't know what it looks like, but somebody could have two and a half grams and say, hey, the law was passed, I'm, I'm good, but we don't, you know, so it's, it's gonna be like a, a limbo kinda situation.
We did a little looking and best guess it's about the size of two medium meatballs.
Two and a half grams is two medium meatballs?
Two medium-sized meatballs. That's what we're gonna go with for, for visual. You laughed, that's what it showed.
Two, two me?
Or about a quarter-
Is that like a wedding soup meatball?
Yeah, what do you consider a medium meatball?
I got under the difference.
Sunday spaghetti meatball. A Sunday spaghetti dinner meatball.
I mean, I'm with you on this one.
Or about a quarter, about a quarter of, uh, sandwich bag.
Okay, alright. That's a good, alright. Is there any other unfinished business? Any new business for tonight?
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to remind that, um, our wonderful clerk that we're going to miss. Um, we are still doing a ongoing search. The posting will go down this Friday, December eighth. Um, we're starting interviews. We've started them already, um, this week and we have for next week, so just that that posting is still there and, um, and would like to thank Ms. McKenzie for all that you do.
Absolutely.
You will be missed, thank you.
Is there, uh, uh, prerequisite for this job? I mean, you have to have some kinda educational qualification or?
It's, it's on the website, um, and I can, I can go over that with you, but it's, um, not a job that there's like a plethora of clerks that are applying to be a clerk. It's, it's sort of a unique, uh, job and, um, it's one that McKenzie does really well. We're gonna miss her with that.
The job posting that council put up, there are the minimum qualifications, high school diploma, driver's license, um, experience as a clerk or in an office setting is preferred. But the knowledge of and demonstrated skills required, um, would be computer literacy, proficiency in Microsoft Office suites, um, knowledge of clerical procedures and systems such as filing and recording keeping, uh, organizational skills, uh, prioritizing tasks and meeting deadlines, strong attention to detail, accuracy and data entry and documentation, communication skills for both verbal and written, and ability to work independently are the required skills.
Thank you.
I think those are, well, to me, they're kinda generic, um, but there's another level of municipal clerk training that we like people to also strive for. Can someone speak to that so people are aware of it?
It's, um, certified municipal clerk training. Um, you have to be a member of, um, I believe two organizations for two years before you can even get that certi- certificate. But in the meantime, while you are a member of those, um, you have to do certain courses and classes and get a certain number of points with the classes and with experience. Um, and I believe you have to be on like volunteer to be on certain boards, so you, it's a process. It takes at least two years to get that.
And something, I can't, can't speak for the whole council, but I think this would be, help us perform a lot better and according to whatever laws there are about it.
Now, give me some roll here. Now, the clerk, does she work for this council or does she work for you?
She works for us.
And is that's a full-time job?
Council has two employees, the, the clerk, clerk and the finance director. Those are the two employees that we hire. Everybody else is hired by Mr. Timmonier or his staff.
Thank you.
Did you wanna add something?
No, sir.
Alright, uh, any other new business? Uh, does anyone have anything to share or tell us something we don't know?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Um, not this last Sunday, but the Sunday before, the Ashtrubula Area Ministerial Association had a community Thanksgiving service and three people were honored by the twenty twenty-three Cup of Cold Water Award for their service to the community. So I would like to, um, give a shout out to Peggy Sensky, Dr. Deborah Barrickman and Otis Sandage, who were the winners of that award this year.
Very good. Did anybody else have anything for tell us something we don't know? Just, uh, just a reminder, uh, I know they had Shop Small Saturday a couple of weeks ago, but it, I think this weekend, uh, um, on the, yeah, this is the, on Bridge Street, there's a shopping, uh, event. I forget the name of it, but you know, their stores are gonna be featuring different things and, uh, uh, and if you go down there, it's really, you see a lot of people, isn't it busy down there? You see a lot of people walking up and down the streets, the restaurants are full, so that's nice. So continue to shop small, um, uh, in the area. Main Street, I know, has been, uh, busier. I went to the little thing on the space on Main, so, and I saw, so, uh, continue to do that. And, um, like I said, we have still a lot of good things going on, um, to, uh, so. Anything else? Okay. Anyone in the public would like to address council at this time? No, you have to go to the board.
Yeah.
We're funny like that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Holman and I were talking about the ADDA and you were talking downtown. They do have an annual meeting and holiday party on the fourteenth at the space on Main in the evening, five thirty to eight, so if people wanna get involved, it's the annual meeting. But it's a festive event too, um, and learn a little bit more about the ADDA, so.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I just had a question for the city manager about the, um, demolition and removal of damaged and blighted properties. What, um, what is typically requested for the amount and, and what does that look like? How many properties, um, annually? And are you anticipating the same or more than usual or?
Yeah, so it, it's broken up throughout the, this, this grant funding comes through, um, the state through the land banks, county land banks. Um, I believe every land bank was designate or was, um, awarded five hundred thousand dollars. Um, so that has to be divided up throughout the whole county. A typical demolition, because we have to do asbestos abatement in these, uh, can be anywhere between fifteen and, so I take that back a little bit, so probably between thirteen and twenty-two thousand dollars per property. And so it just depends on how those bids come in, how big the buildings are and, and how many we can get. How many other locations submit properties to be part of this demolition as well? Um, and then, uh, the land bank administers them from there.
And does Ashtrubula typically get what percentage of the five hundred thousand?
The biggest.
Biggest, okay.
Yes, we do, yeah.
That's good news.
I would say in my tenure, we've probably taken down, um, over three hundred houses.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how, in fourteen years?
Twelve.
Twelve years, okay, wow. That's a lot. Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Could, could you give us your name for the minutes, please?
My name's Leona Norman.
Right, I, I knew. We have to make it official. Thank you, Leona, Mrs. Norman. Anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing no one, council is going to go into executive session, at which time we will come out and adjourn with no business conducted. So with that in mind, we will see everybody on December eighteen. So please, uh, be safe and have a good couple of weeks and thank you.